Welcome. It's the end of a very long day.
No, and I want to say thank you because it's actually been, it's been a fabulous day. I've really enjoyed being able to visit your buildings and, and talk to a lot of your staff and students as well. It's been a great experience. So, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, we enjoyed getting to know you a little better too. So currently, Dr. Gary Maestis is serving as the interim superintendent of Hingham Public Schools, following the resignation of Dr. Paul Austin at the end of June. Dr. Austin was hired in 2019 after the resignation, retirement of Dr. Dorothy Gallo, who served as superintendent for 18 years. So, the committee is now seeking a new superintendent with the vision to harness the many strengths of Hingham Public Schools, while also moving the district forward. So, for the interview tonight, we have planned a 90-minute interview with 16 questions. So, we ask you to gear your response time accordingly, and there's a clock right there, so you can keep an eye on it. We may have, we each have two questions. We're going to go around the table. We may have a few follow-up questions, and hopefully, we have some time remaining at the end, because the community did submit some questions too.
Wonderful.
So, I have the first one. We've read all your materials, and some of us had enjoyed the opportunity to get to know you a little better today as we toured the district. Could you take two minutes and tell us a little more about yourself, your career, and why Hingham?
Sure. Sorry, I was trying to take this off to get a sip of water. It's stuck on this, but okay.
Just take your time.
So, why Hingham? Because I'm, I'm local. I know the high standards that you have in the community. I know the educational excellence that Hingham is known for. I also, I, I think that there's also some work to be done. And some of the work that may need to be done are things that I've done in my past position, and I'm poised and ready to do some of that work. I think that I'm, I'm looking for a place where I can be long-term. I'm not looking for a stepping stone. And as I had shared with you originally, I'm not, there are the superintendent openings. I know it's hard to find superintendents. I have not applied anywhere else. This is where I have chosen to apply, because I think it would be a good fit, both ways. And I think I have a lot to bring to the table.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Hello. As you know, Hingham has undergone and continues to undergo many changes in leadership positions over the past few years, including the addition of new central office positions. Can you tell us a little about your approach to hiring new leadership team members? And then also, these new leaders are going to require a great deal of mentoring and coaching. So, can you give us some examples of, or give us a little bit about your mentoring approach, and maybe some examples of successful mentoring, and if you have any examples of unsuccessful mentoring?
Okay. I think it's really important to bring, have a coaching model for anyone new that's coming in, not just new to the role of being an administrator, but new to a district, because there are learning skills that need to be honed as far as understanding the culture of a district, and then also, understanding the role itself. I am a huge proponent of working with leadership staff, bringing new people in, and fostering relationships. So, relationship building is huge. And again, I'm going to use the word coaching. Evaluation, obviously, is what we all have to do for everyone. I don't think, unless we've given someone the tools, the professional development, what is needed, it's unfair to say that they're not doing their job well. So, it's on us to give them the tools, so they can succeed. I have overseen the new principal induction network that we had in Waymouth, new administrative induction network that we had in Waymouth. I oversaw it, parts of it, as an assistant superintendent, and then I led it as superintendent. I've brought in outside coaches to work with staff. I believe in having, believe it or not, two coaches, one internal and one external, because there are certain things that you may want to discuss with your coach, that you don't want to say to your peer that is working in one of the other buildings. And so, there's different purposes. So, one, you could look at it as, one is more for the role as a leader, and the other one might be more as far as the nuances of whatever community you're working in. That the internal coach would help with that. I was also very picky as far as who, what coaches we worked with, to make sure they were building skills that provided a collaborative mindset. And I did not want all of our buildings to be islands by themselves, doing something totally different than some of the other buildings. Every building had to have its own flavor and nuance, but we also had to be all on the same page. And the reason I say that, and I would tell my administrators that, is that any child coming into our school district should have the same opportunity for a high-quality education, regardless of what part of town they're living in. And that was something I always had our coaches working on with our leadership team. What sometimes didn't go well was if the match was not good with a coach, and so, and they didn't speak up about it. I always, once relationships were built, later on, sometimes I'd find out, "Well, they weren't really helping me. They weren't coming as much as I needed them to, or I didn't want to have to call them." And what I would say to the, our staff is that, "You should have let me know that earlier on, because it's really important for you to be successful." I think anyone you bring in to a district, whether it be a leadership position, a classroom position, you know, maintenance, custodial, whatever it might be, our role is to make sure we give them the tools to be successful. I always had, every interview, final candidate that was coming through came through my office, even though, for, for teaching and learning, and for administrators. And that was because I wanted to make sure we always were hiring high-quality staff, and that they fully understood what the expectations were coming into our district. And one of the things I always shared with administrators and educational staff coming in is my expectation is for you to make mistakes. And sometimes I'd get a funny look, and I'd say, "We only learn from making mistakes." And I said, "I don't want you to hide those. I don't want you to pretend they're not happening, or I don't want you to say that you're, you're all set. I'm fine. I'm fine." We all need help, you know, including myself for different things. I would fully say to them that a lot of the things that I understood or knew or the knowledge I had was because I really did it wrong the first time, and I learned from that. So, that's a, I can share more if you'd like, but that's just a little bit of my philosophy around really supporting new leaders.
That's great. Thank you.
I have the next one.
Sure.
As you may know, Hingham appropriated nearly a 9% budget increase for fiscal '22, supported by one-time funds, which will not be available in the long term. The increase will result in town-wide revenue deficit for fiscal '23 and beyond, without an operational override to continue the supports being funded. Municipal and school leaders are currently working together to assess future needs, explore additional revenue opportunities, including consideration of a prop 2.5 operational override, and to identify ways to sustainably fund the budget going forward. Can you give an example of how you have worked with your school committee and the community to state your case for budget needs? And what, if any, experience have you had successfully working with the community to gain support for a fully-funded school budget? And then, as a follow-up, how do you define and justify wants and needs when available dollars cannot cover all requests?
That is not, not only a concern, I think, for Hingham, it's a concern for a lot of school districts, because so much one-time funding has been poured in to education right now, that trying to use it in ways where you don't put it into staff, it's not, it's not reasonable, right? So, you have all these staff members you've now hired, and you have to figure out how to keep them on. So, I think a lot of communities are dealing with the same situation. So, how do you get the needs out there about what's really important? I think it's important to look at the data. It's important to talk to your staff. It's important to talk to students and families, and see where some main core needs are. I, I would say that, I know you're in the process of doing, I say accelerated improvement plan. I think you say strategic plan. And I think depending upon what those results are, that should also be driving the budget. We should make sure, I always had budget meetings very early on with every cost center, every building, and we would talk about, where could we find some savings? Where are there different things that, I refer to as breakage, that we could find to potentially help cover some of the other choices that we've made to keep in the budget? I always had a five-year, we called it, we had it, it's like a long-term budget plan. We called it a needs list. And, you know, sometimes we would have people say, "It's really not a needs list. It's a wants list." And I would kindly push back and say, "No, it is a needs list" when we look at the needs of the kids that we have in our district, and what they deserve for an education. I would set it up as a five-year plan, and spread it out over different fiscal years, trying to add on, forecast different positions we might need, or look at the enrollment, whether it's a decline or an increase, and plan accordingly for that. I did not do that in a silo. I always did that with the leadership team, the union, and school committee, our budget meetings. We talked about that a lot. One success that I did have, and I say "I," it was not "I," it was a whole team. We had a successful debt exclusion vote in the community for the Chapman Middle School. That was not something that was really heard of in my community. And I will tell you, it was this grassroots movement from a lot of the families that had kids in the school district, and they saw the need of a building for kids and for our community long-term. And it was on the heels. Also, we had a brand-new library coming in, and there were just different things, a lot of field projects as well, turf fields that were coming in. And we had a lot of buy-in from families, because we had this grassroots movement from people in the community. And they got out there and they explained. They did door-to-door campaigning. We had, I went to more different, more places in town than you can imagine, really just giving a big-picture overview of what the plan was, why it wasn't just about the school department, why it was about the whole community. And we also were really thoughtful when we put the 2014, wrote the educational plan, and then we tweaked it as we went on. But we were thoughtful about what spaces in there would be value-add for the town in general, and for anyone that wanted to come and move into the community. And we had an incredible amount of people turn out for the vote, and it, and it passed. That was a huge success for us. And the other piece that I think was something to celebrate about that is that it represented not just a school that the school committee was doing, and for the school department, it was a total effort of the entire community. So, that building, as you drive by and people see it, I think people feel as though they own a little piece of that, because they got behind it and moved it forward. How do I differentiate between wants and needs? We look at the data, and we look at what's happening, and what we really need to prioritize. There are a lot of wants, and they're probably, they're probably valid wants, but we really have to sometimes drill down to what do we really need, and what is going to actually be an investment that is going to help make an impact long-term? The staff that you hired is an investment that will make an impact long-term, because what we're seeing right now with children, learning-wise, also social-emotional-wise, that is going to be a long-term impact, right? And that is something that's not going away overnight. And without having the staff in place, it is going to be extremely detrimental to your, your community, or any community that lets that staff go. Getting staff right now is really hard. And if you have people in place, you want to keep them, if they're successful in doing what they need to be doing and making progress with kids. Hopefully, that answered your question.
Thank you.
I have the next question. Our district is considered to be a high-performing district. We also have many areas in which we compare well below our benchmark communities, including performance of high-need students, administrative support, one-to-one device programming, and the lack of a fine arts director. We are embarking on a strategic plan to analyze our programs and gain insight from the community about what it wants for our schools. Please explain your experience developing and implementing a strategic plan for your district, and please tell us how it addressed issues to implement and ones to change.
Sure. Again, it's always data-driven and all strategic, looking at what are the long-term plan is, and making sure everyone is on board. Every school building, school improvement plan, really fed off of the district improvement plan or accelerated improvement plan, and funneled down to the building principals' goals, and again, down to the staff's goals as well. Including my goals were always tied in to the, the long-term work that needed to be done with the overarching plan. I can speak directly to, I had the honor to be in the district while we initiated our one-to-one project, and, and they are a one-to-one district now. It moved much faster because of COVID, and because of the funds that were coming in. One piece that was difficult with it, and I know they were in the process of trying to change, is that it was on the capital plan, and it needed to move off of capital and into our general operating budget, because I always had a fear of, not everything on capital is always funded, and you can't have something that you're relying on day in and day out, be on a capital plan, and then all of a sudden have funding pulled. And we did have that happen at one point. And we had to figure out a way to Band-Aid our technology leasing program that we had, because the lease was there, and we had to pay it. So, that did happen to us one year. We did figure things out, but it was quite difficult, and it impacted our curriculum, some of our curriculum adoption because of that. But I will say that Waymouth has been very successful moving forward with one-to-one, and making sure that the tech integration piece is included in that as well. As far as fine arts director, during my tenure, I did put in place an assistant director for fine performing arts. And I am a huge supporter of the arts, and it is something that was needed for a very long time. We had it back in, let's say, 2007, and then 2008, everything was cut, and we were rebuilding. The needs list that I mentioned was one of the ways that I drove that, getting that position into place, because it was on the needs list. It was something that we discussed for a very long time, about rebuilding back an infrastructure that was needed, that gave credence needed towards all academic areas, not just core academics. And we did get that put in place. A lot of it was funded through breakage. Again, our enrollment was down, and we shifted some of the funding. I think I shared before, we did have to lose some positions because of some funding needs during my tenure there. And I did not cut the fine and performing arts position, because I knew that if I did that, it was not going to come back very easily. We had overarching STEM and humanities directors. And so, what I ended up cutting was the assistant STEM, assistant humanities directors, and leaving the assistant director for social-emotional learning and fine and performing arts, because I knew the other academic pieces were easier to really convince people that were needed, and kept the other ones on. So, I also worked very closely with the town, because the reality is, every department has needs. And we have to think about how we can leverage certain things, and make sure that we're not depleting another town department for the sake of our department, and just looking holistically where revenue was possible, you know, to come in, and things like that. So, hopefully, that answered, Liza, your question, and if it didn't, please let me know. I can.
I guess I'm the next one. And you actually just alluded to your technology integration. And my question is, how have you integrated technology into educational programming in your district?
We hired tech integration specialists. And the tech, we had an overarching person that was a director of technology. And then, we hired the tech integration specialists that would go out and work specifically with staff, do coaching to implement some of the tools that we wanted to see used in the classrooms. They would go in and model. They would support whatever was needed. They would push out, you know, different tools that were there, and let people kind of play with them and try them. And I think once, what happened was, once some of our staff saw the benefits of it, it just started becoming more natural. COVID came. Everyone was forced into technology, right? So, I think that some of the byproduct of that was that people became much more experienced and skilled. And sometimes, some of the holdouts on Google Classroom and things like that, that overnight changed, and people were trying things that they hadn't tried before. I still think the tech, the tech integration specialists are crucial, because you can put, you can get a, you know, wonderful infrastructure for your connectivity. You can pass out all the devices you want. They're not going to be used unless someone is trained and provided the opportunity of how to successfully implement them. So, the tech team that we had was wonderful. They did outreach to families. They were doing, actually, home visits during COVID to put in devices to help with connectivity in homes. We had a, we did a traveling, it was actually a school bus that had some wireless connectivity. So, for some kids, they really did not have access to the internet. They could get on the bus, do some homework during the whole time they were still at home, or do work from the bus, and we had tech integration specialists there helping, and staff that was on there as well. So, I think that it's really important to have that coaching piece. And if you don't have that, it's very hard to get it embedded into the work that's done every day.
I have the next question. The superintendent leads the administrative effort to plan for, operate, maintain, evaluate, and supervise improvements to school and district facilities. Hingham is current involved, currently involved in two MSBA projects. One, an accelerated repair project, and another, a core project. Can you tell us about any experience you may have planning and renovating, or rebuilding, or how you would approach the critical issue this brings?
Sure. I've done multiple boiler projects during my tenure. There's been window projects, door projects. While I was superintendent, it was been predominantly boiler projects. But also, the, I was part of writing the ed plan in 2014 for the Chapman Middle School that is under construction right now, and I've been part of that entire project. And I have a lot of expertise in that area. I've learned a lot from that. The community was highly involved. I think the visioning sessions that we had were amazing, because we got to hear what kids wanted, what staff wanted, what the community wanted. And I'm still involved in that. I'm, I'm still on the building committee. They allowed me to stay on the committee, just because I, I was the one with the longest history of the project. And it's something I'm really proud of. It's going to be, it's a very large school. And I'm not only proud of it for what it's going to be offering for an educational experience for kids, what it's going to offer to our community is amazing. We were very thoughtful, because we wanted to think about, what does this, what does this build mean to us long-term? And how is it going to provide us opportunities to expand some areas where we really needed to have some expansion? Potentially, sub-separate programs. We did a, a community area that was a, for wraparound services, so there was a different entrance to it, and it could have, it could have some social-emotional supports at times. We talked about having people there to do vaccines if needed to be, need be. And this was all before COVID, right? We, we went to see multiple buildings, and we took what we thought would be the best fit for our community. And, and we honestly, we, we aimed high. And in that, we were supported with what we put forward, and the building's going to be something everyone will be very proud of for a very long time. And I think you know that it adds to your community value. We had a brand-new library that was built in Waymouth. There were people that were saying that they were coming and moving to our community. They heard there's a brand-new library. So, I do think things like that add to your community value in general. But I also think they help in touring your buildings today. There, you do have some inequities in your, in your primary school buildings. And I was happy to hear that, you know, Foster is moving forward. And I think that it has to, that something has to be planned again, also for a long-term thought process. Do you need more sub-separate programs? Do you need more programs that think outside of the box as far as meeting student needs? And will that building have enough space for that? Where do you, what do you have as far as space for professional development, teacher learning, or a community facility for different programming after school, or things like that? So, those are some of the questions that, you know, I would ask as far as, when you're thinking about the build, what's going to happen with those pieces? So, yeah, I have a lot of experience with MSBA, and going to Boston a lot, having our meetings there pre-COVID, and we're, we're closely with Jack McCarthy. And I would be excited to be able to, to help with this build.
Great. Thank you. Hingham has approximately 650 students on individual education plans, but as a district, we have work to do to make sure that these kids are fully included in the academic and extracurricular life of our schools. Can you talk about concrete steps you have taken in your district to ensure that special education students are fully included in the academic and social life of the school?
We had a, we, we wrote a whole inclusion plan. The former special education director had put an inclusion plan forward. We did a lot of training around inclusion, and we really defined what is inclusion. Because when we actually dug deeper into that, your definition of inclusion might be different than my definition of inclusion. And we had to really talk a lot about what does it mean for us as a district when we say inclusion. We had different people that were skilled in looking at programs, come out and evaluate any of the programs that we had, but also have conversations with our special ed staff, our gen ed staff, and our administrators, and parents, especially CPAC, around what, what was potentially needed, so we could make sure we were addressing those things. We've modified multiple programs to make sure they were rigorous and up to the standards that we wanted them to be. We also changed our practices around hiring any of the special education teachers that were coming in district. I asked, I wanted them to be either certified in OG or Wilson coming in to do that work. And then, we also started looking for, in our math coaches, very strong math skill sets. They may not have been specially certified, but when we did our work to compute, they were there to help the staff, coach them on how to differentiate, and make sure the kids were be able to access the curriculum. We looked a lot at documents from the Department of Education and entry point standards, and what did that mean? We broke those down with the staff, so they fully understood that. And we did a lot of work with different researchers out there, like Marilyn Friend. The provider that we came in to do a lot of the analysis was Ann Donovan. And we didn't look just globally at special ed. We really did it program by program, and then the overarching special ed program. So, it was really honed in to individual needs. Is there still work to do in Waymouth for special ed? Absolutely. I think there will always be work to do, because I think we can only grow and get better, and things change over time. I will say, I'm not, I'm not shy or hesitant to look at what we do well and what we may need to have addressed and tweak a little bit. And I think that special education, those students have, they have IEPs for a reason, right? And so, we want to make sure that we're addressing those needs. But I also think that it's really important to look at what we're doing as far as early intervention, and how are we looking at preschool and kindergarten in grade one? And looking at what the data is about those students, and how does that data potentially forecast some of the needs that might be there? And then, how are we tweaking the teaching and learning at that point? So, we can catch some of the needs early on, and then, they don't end up requiring different special education programming down the road.
Thank you.
I'm next. So, obviously, the pandemic has had an incredible impact on education, and has affected the lives and well-being of students, educators, and teachers, administrators alike. Additionally, Hingham has historically performed very well in standardized testing, and the district has received several awards, speaking to its academic achievements. Unfortunately, this has led to a great deal of stress on the student end in a general sense. So, my question is, how have you supported both student and staff's social-emotional well-being while still promoting the high student achievement?
Sure. So, I think that student stress and staff stress right now is at an all-time high. I think it was higher, it was high before, and now, obviously, we have the pandemic and COVID laid on top of it. I think that the stress of high school, the amount of different things that are put on our students, whether it be athletics, maybe arts, or things like that, those are all important. And APs are important. All classes are important. But I think that we have to work with kids and families to think about what is manageable, what can we actually handle realistically and well? And while we're doing those things and being successful with them, what are some of the self-care skills that can be taught to some of our students? At the same time, to make sure they continue to thrive and don't become overwhelmed, or feel as though that it has become so stressful that it's not doable? I think that the colleges are saying that many of the kids that are coming in are stressed out, burnt out, from a lot of the high school experiences that they've had, and the pressures that have been put on them. I also think staff, the self-care of staff is important, and I think we need to talk to students and staff to find out what, what do they need? And I think we need to talk to students and staff to find out what what do they need? What will be helpful? And also empowering staff and students to speak up and say, I need help. Or I may be uncomfortable with this, or I might need more time on this, or um I'm really struggling with X, Y, and Z. And then having the staff available to give options uh to try different things that might help uh remedy that stress, but also would be long term skills that they could use as they move forward into their um adult life. And to make sure they're successful um in whatever career pathway they choose down the road. Um, in Waymouth, I know I um did a whole mindful mindfulness series for years. We had, this we started a while ago and it was just for that. It was for staff for self care. And we um brought a lot of people in um to come in and talk about mindfulness. Um, when I was a building principal, every single teacher was trained in brain gym um for multiple reasons. Some of it, some of it for the academic purpose of it, but also for the movement purpose of it that helps with some of that stress. Um, also, uh, I was a huge proponent of BACS, which is um a re-bacc program. And it worked on the, it relied on the work of um Dr. John uh Rady out of Harvard and how movement helps um with stress and anxiety. And so I think teaching some of those skills um throughout a student's career and also having some of those transfer skills for staff is really important. I know that we were putting into place from Yale, the ruler program. And the entire beginning training of that program was about the self care for the teacher first. And then got into what to teach the uh students in the classroom. Because if a teacher is not, you can't pour from an empty cup. That's what we kept talking about. You can't pour from an empty cup. So you get to figure out what fills your cup. Make sure we place that uh in the forefront of something that's just important as important to do as whatever else is on the docket and then have that be a skill that you embrace and um build into your repertoire for long term. Thank you, Alida.
Thank you. So we are about at the halfway point of our questions and we're doing great on time. So as the superintendent in Hingham, you'll be a member of the town leadership team. Um, can you share your experiences in working with and collaborating with other municipal departments?
Yeah, so I worked very closely with all municipal departments. Um, actually, on my reference list, uh, different members um from uh the head of procurement and overseeing facilities was one of the people that I spoke with. Um, as far as being one of my references and he joked around with me because um he knows I learned a lot about facilities because we had a lot of problems in the very beginning of my tenure superintendent. Um, water is a nightmare. Leaking and floods is a nightmare. Um, so I I learned more than I ever thought I would about facilities. Um, he was joking. He said, oh, whoever the facility person is there, good luck because you know too much. He actually said, you know, just enough to be dangerous. So, um, which is fine. Um, I worked very closely with the chief of staff, um with the town solicitor. Um, I would do presentations in front of um the council. Um, and I worked closely with the council as well. Um, I reported directly to the school committee. So I was always very cognizant and careful of, you know, I, that's who I report to. Um, but also we're, we were one town and one community. Uh, I worked very closely with the police chief, the fire chief. Uh, we did a lot when we were doing, we were revising our entire um safety protocols. Uh, we changed, we changed from what was called four Ls over to the Alice method um for our intruder um action plans. And um I I frequently would pick up the phone, call the head of DPW, especially if we had some weather situations that were happening. Um, you know, questioned like, how many plows drivers do you have? Uh, based upon how many plow drivers I had, how can we work together to make sure that we're um capitalizing on those types of things to make sure that the streets are cleared for the entire community, things like that. So um I worked really closely with them. And um whenever we could do something where budget wise, it was a um two for or three for and it benefited multiple departments. Um, I thoroughly enjoyed doing that. Uh, we had school resource offices in our buildings. Uh, we talked at different points about having the school department potentially fund some of those positions. Um, we never really got to that point. Um, but I was also very cognizant about the the police department was funding those positions. And sometimes it was a difficult thing for some of the other um police officers because they felt as though they were being pulled from some of the work that traditionally would have been done by some of the people in other roles that weren't in our school resource officer role. Um, so anything we could do together, writing grants, things like that. I'm very accustomed to doing that. Uh, I oversaw a very big district. Um, I think I've I've shared multiple times. It was like fourteen hundred employees that include part time and full time. And um and it was at times multiple things happening. And I had uh such a relationship with the town side that I I could call on them if I needed to. If there was something happening in one of our facilities and all of our team was doing something else, I could call on them and vice versa. Everyone would help each other. So um good relationships. I think it's really important to build those relationships um and talk and communicate and um and be really one team. Everyone's there for the the entire town and the community. Um, so I like to try to be on the same page with them and um be there to support them. So if their budget was coming up, it was nice to, you know, be there in the audience to support their budget and vice versa. So you're welcome.
Speaking of communication, um effective communication is a very key component to a successful school district. And the Hingham community has high expectations for dynamic, effective and transparent communications from the superintendent. Can you detail for us uh your communication strategy approach? And what role does social media play in a district's communication strategy?
Um, the communication approach with staff, um I I held open forums um on a um typically at least four times a year where uh the people could just come and they would have whatever questions they had, we'd we'd sit and talk. Um, I was out in buildings a lot. And so uh communication wise, I was in, I was in classrooms, I was in hallways, so a lot of communication there. Uh, communication with families, I frequently would, uh, we had school messenger, so frequently send home messages. Um, whether it be voice or email, some people would opt out of the voice because they, I think, got tired of hearing my voice, which is okay. Um, and then uh we also translated, we had to translate into our top three languages. So we always translated into Arabic, Spanish and Portuguese, and so those would go out as well. Um, having meetings with families, if something came up and there was a uh issue or dilemma that we were dealing with, I would rather have people come in in person and we would talk and address it head on. Uh, did we always agree? No. But was I always open to listening and hearing uh everyone's viewpoint? And frequently, uh, the viewpoints helped make us uh come to a different decision or a a final decision that was more collaborative uh than in not just made in a silo. Um, we had a community liaison person that would frequently get communication out in different ways. A lot of times through social media. Um, social media can be your friend and it can also be your enemy. You know, so you have to be thoughtful about what you put out there. Um, I frequently would share with my leadership team. Um, you have to think about how you're communicating because uh it has, this day and age, it always has a chance to be on the front page of a paper or be sent out, um, you know, digitally via multiple um different media sources. Uh, that being said, I wanted people to be transparent and it was better to share information than to have people make up information on their own. And it has to be done in a timely manner. Um, and I I would own things when decisions were not done well. Uh, and we would celebrate when things were communicated out that had gone well. Uh, we learned, we learned a lot about translations when um Google does not always translate well. And uh we came up with some uh different ways of handling that. And fortunately, it was a, it was a message that was sent out that in Arabic that um we had had a fire, uh, there was a smell of fire at our, one of our middle schools. And um it was, when we investigated, the fire department came. It, the neighbor next door was burning leaves. So it was, so the fire itself, I referred to as the fire was off campus in translating in Arabic. And I sent the message out. It said, um, it turned out fire, it was changed into shooting off campus, right? So that's not a great message to go out. Um, very alarming to families. And uh, thank goodness, one of our uh Arabic speaking families called up to administration right away and then offered to help translate it. And and we learned, um, and I sent it out, which I was glad I sent it out. Um, because I know that that uh middle school principal would have been devastated and I took responsibility. Uh, and we changed some of the models of how we translated moving forward. Um, I think social media can be helpful, like I said, it can be harmful. It just has to be really thought out how you're using it. Um, we frequently had um subgroups uh starting their own pages and things like that because some of our buildings didn't have their own uh social media pages. And that was sometimes hard because once we got on top of that and then did have some of our own um better um connections on social media. I think some of the families felt as though, but this is, this is ours and this is how we communicate it. And then it became, well, but this is the official site. So there's conversations that would have to be had around that. Um, and I think that communication now more than ever is so important because um, you know, people are worried about health and safety and all of those things. So um I probably tend to over communicate. Um, but I'd rather do that than under communicate and have people not know what's going on.
I have the next one. Um, we are currently in our second year of our equity and inclusion audit. How have you, in your past experience, been involved with movements like this within school systems? And what do you think is the most difficult part of diversity, equity and inclusion work in a school district? And then what would you prioritize in your first year?
Um, I think the most difficult part are some of the conversations, the tough conversations that happen in the beginning. And people um, people get anxious and uncomfortable. And uh difficult conversations have to be had. Um, I think it's important to set the groundwork or and norms around how those conversations um can be had in a respectful manner. And listening is so important to make sure that we're hearing everyone's voice at the table. Um, I started doing work in this um area a long time ago because um our middle school had been identified as over overly suspending um students of color. And um we were also identified for um having um different subgroups. Um, predominantly students of color, over qualifying for special education. And um also higher dropout rates. So we brought in the Anti-Defamation League. Um, this, this was at least five years ago. Um, and we started the work with them. Uh, they started for professional development series with us. And then we rolled that down uh through the other levels as well. Uh, we really, I felt like we we outgrew a little bit of that work. Um, and we needed to have a different nuance to it. And so we brought in um some other professional development trainers around that. Uh, we also did send staff and students to the World of Difference Training so they could do um work within the buildings during the day. Um, I had a lot of pushback in the beginning. Uh, people felt as though I was openly calling them racist or that there was something uh difficult that um that I, I was pointing fingers almost and that that wasn't the case. It was a matter of um dealing with what was in front of us for data and talking about it. Uh, maybe there was a valid reason why certain things were happening, but we had to talk about it because it was a glaring statistic that we had there. And um that has continued over time and still had been something that popped out from the Department of Education. We did bring in um an outside consultant to do an overview of the entire district and look at um our diversity, equity and inclusion um and provide information on that. Um, the, that report had not been released when I had left. Um, so I have not seen that the final document. Um, so we also brought in multiple uh trainers such as Jamal Adams, who's a now diversity, equity, inclusion trainer in um Situitt. We, I brought him in for, during a summer for professional development for the leadership team. Um, because I really felt as though we needed to do work there. Um, we also did a lot with Department uh of Education around um really LGBTQIA+. If I said that incorrectly, please correct me. But we did a lot of work there. Um, they had different staff members at Department of Ed that were willing to come out and do a lot of training with us on those pieces as well. Um, and I I was really, I was really proud that our, our leadership team eventually um embraced this and started to say what they didn't know and where they asked questions, where they really needed some help. Um, and did not, I didn't want it to be on the shoulder of the students to explain things to the adults, uh, because that's what sometimes happens. Um, it really needed to be the adults really kind of getting up and educated themselves. And um, like I said, we had Jamal Adams come in. I know Waymouth continued with Jamal because he was there at a, we had a um a community night around diversity, equity, inclusion. And the work that the students who were doing that night, they shared out. It was amazing. It was also sad to hear some of the stories that people were saying and how they felt as though they did not belong or included in our district. Um, a lot of work still to be done. I worked um closely with some graduates um from the high school that wanted to do a very um a peaceful vigil on Legion Field, which is a very big area. Um, they wanted to do it in front of town hall. Um, and I know that was not approved. Um, not, it wasn't that I, I did not not approve it. Um, there, there was some pushback uh because of the location and things like that. And uh we supported the um recent graduates to um have them do that uh at Legion Field. And that was actually uh an initiative with fire department, police, everyone coming together to do that work. I think there's a lot of conversations that still need to be had. Um, I think the work has started in Waymouth. Um, and like I said, it started a long time ago and it's slow moving and it's taken a while. Um, I ran into a situation, which I have, I shared um with some of you before, um in twenty nineteen, when I had uh families of color. Um, uh, many of our black and brown families were concerned about a a situation where we had that with a athletic event called a whiteout. And they were seeing how it was really making them uncomfortable. Uh, the kids were being asked to paint their face white. Um, I was getting emails, high school principal was getting emails and they were saying how it was um they were not, it it was very hard for their kids. And that um it was something that they were hoping that we would address. We did address it. Um, it, to talk about communication, it blew up. It was on mu- uh multiple media sites. I knew my mother was in Florida and called me, I just heard about you on the news. And um that's not like, that wasn't the news piece I really wanted my mom to hear. So, but it is what it is. Um, I will say openly that the letter that went out to families, um, I was crafted with um legal advice. And hindsight, I would have changed that letter a bit and softened it and made sure it was my own voice. Uh, I did regret that and I openly said that. I met with the the um athletic team and their families. But I would not change my decision even to today about canceling that event. Um, and some of it wasn't really, it wasn't really even necessarily about, it wasn't about the intention behind the the event. They hadn't followed proper protocol. They had not submitted the event up to central office for approval. They did not show the shirts that were being made for approval, which is part of our process that we typically do in our um protocols. Um, if that had happened, we would have gotten ahead of this. And when we had gotten that uh form submitted to us, we would have had a conversation with the team, talked to the the boosters group and all of that and really um tried to probably um change it so it was more inclusive of everyone. Uh, that did not happen. They went forward with the event without us knowing and it just went out on social media. And families started to call. Um, and then when it blew up, as um large as it blew up, um, a lot of the families that were having a very difficult time with it did not want to come out openly uh in the public and share their concerns. And uh they shared with me, uh, they were afraid of retaliation and they were afraid of what would happen. Um, this was a an awful thing to happen and a good thing to happen because it opened my eyes to some of the racism that was um in my community where I really didn't think it was there. Um, I had, because I grew up there and had gone through the school system with a lot of the parents that were at the meeting I had, I'm, statements were made to me, things like, you grew up here, you know better. This is, you know, why are you making a big deal about this? Um, and I said, I'm making a big deal about it because there's families that are having, and kids that are really struggling with us. And and we need to have a conversation about what does this mean to someone else uh rather than just you. We had um anti, um, you know, white supremacy groups. We had um, anti, um, you know, white supremacy groups calling, making phone calls to us. And it, it was awful. I'll be honest with you, it was an awful experience, but it was good for me to go through. Because I got to um, experience and I shared this with the teachers earlier. I, I had like this two week window of time that was horrific. But it taught me, um, some people, that's their life. It's not just a two week window of time. Some people deal with that on a day in and day out basis. Um, and I think that in any sort of leadership position, if we have um, the capability and the opportunity to advocate and be an ally, uh, where someone else does not feel as comfortable speaking up. That's part of our job to do that. Um, I did get thank you notes. I got anonymous letters saying, thank you so much. We really appreciate, you know, what you did for our kids and things like that. So I know I did the right thing. Um, it was hard. Um, but I think it also proved to a lot of people, I, I can do hard things. It's not always a great conversation. It's not always easy. Um, but as long as I know I'm doing the right thing for kids, uh, I'll stand by that. Absolutely. The letter definitely would be phrased differently. There were some um, statements in the letter that were way too harsh, right? Um, I did try to get to talk to the adults involved early on. To have conversations, the school committee chair and I did, tried to do that. And it was very interesting. They, they didn't want to talk. And I was, I'm like, but, but we need to talk about this because we got to figure out what we're gonna do. So I, I, I think I would, definitely the letter would be phrased differently. Um, probably softer. And I also probably would have um, told the adults that were running the boosters that we were sending that letter out before it was sent out. So I think that was part of the anger that came, was that we sent the letter out to the district. Um, about what our plan was and that we weren't having this. Um, and I had not personally picked up the phone to talk to them myself. Um, that was a good lesson. Um, and I would, I would definitely would do that differently. But again, uh, I still would not have let the event go on knowing the feedback I was getting from kids and families. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, Miss.
Um, I have the next question. Please describe a time when you successfully reconciled a difference between a union position and a school committee position? And what strategies did you use to achieve the positive outcome?
I think that happens a lot in negotiations. Um, and I've sat at many negotiation tables. Uh, and I think what I've done to help uh, get us all to a point of consensus is being in the classroom for the number of years that I was in the classroom. Uh, being a building principal and um, being in special education and general education. I could bring to the table uh, with our school committee negotiation teams. Uh, a, a, a little bit of a, a more focused lens from where the, some of the teachers um, or the negotiating team from the teacher's side, with maybe where they were coming from. And communicate the why behind the ask at times. Um, and also vice versa, in meeting with uh, union representation. Uh, explain a little bit about where the budget was. Um, and being transparent about the budget and what the long-term plans were. And that there wasn't like a, you know, a magic pot of gold I was hiding in the back office. That was gonna suddenly pop up after we finalized uh, negotiations. So um, I think bringing that lens uh, that I have on both sides to each group. Um, helped us successfully mitigate and, and get to more of a consensus faster.
Have the next one. What role do you believe school staff should play in decision-making? How have you involved your staff in the decision-making process?
I frequently would send out surveys, asking for feedback. Um, I would do the open forums I, as I shared and people would come and give me information. Um, or their ideas on different things. Um, most superintendents, when they come into a new role, do an entry plan. So there's a lot of listening and talking um, with people to hear different viewpoints. Um, I think it's important for staff to have, um, be able to voice their opinions. Um, with their building administration, uh, but also with central office as well. Um, I, I listen and I, I actually really listen and learn. And um, I am not hesitant to change a decision I've made. If I hear something from staff that makes total sense and it really should have been done in the very beginning. I will say, that is what we should have done and I apologize that we, you know, didn't go that route. Um, I try to do that ahead of time so we don't end up to a point where you're, we're backtracking or changing things. Um, really having staff being able to have open and candid conversations with principals is important. Uh, everyone is in, the education field, everyone is in this together, right? We all have to work as a one team, heading in the same direction. I think the other part that's important is having a solid vision and strategic plan. So the staff knows what that is, um, based upon input that they have given. Uh, and also they realize that we're all heading in the same direction and we are really being focused. And sticking with that and not um, always changing, not having like PD that's like one and done and things like that. Uh, every time we did a professional development, there was always a survey afterwards that we had asked the staff to fill out. And we did review those um, with a fine tooth comb to make sure that what we were offering was meeting their needs. Um, we also still had in the contract, um, one of the professional development days was a, their choice day. They could do really, um, whatever they felt as though they needed to do for their individual professional development. I was in and out of classrooms a lot, so I would hear directly from the teachers frequently. Um, and I, and I did take into consideration what they were saying. If there was a situation that uh, really called for um, longer conversations. I would set up times in individual buildings. We would find coverage for staff and we would, they would come down and they'd meet with me and, and just talk. Sometimes they'd come down with a teaching partner and, and they'd share different things with me. And uh, we would communicate and um, and I could then take that on to school committee. I could take it on to the leadership team, the, uh, central office leadership team. And then we would uh, progress with whatever plans we were making or decisions to make with everyone's input. Because that's how you get everyone to have buy-in, is if they feel as though they have a voice at the table.
Follow. After the, the PDs were conducted, that you would send the survey out, did you ever have any issues with the union? In sending out the surveys?
Um, for the most part, the union was not upset with me sending out any surveys because I always, I always shared the results. Um, I think if I didn't share the results, it probably would have been an issue. Um, but I uh, most often would, would share out the final results with them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have the next question. Uh, school budgets reflect what is valued in educating our children. Looking at the budget of Hingham Public Schools, what do you see our district valuing? As superintendent, would you maintain the current values or implement changes to those values? If changes in the budget, where and why?
So I noticed that um, definitely there is a value for teaching and learning. Cause a lot of your, your core budget is around staffing, uh, educational staff. Um, one thing I, I did notice, um, I don't want to say you're light on administrators. But I would question, um, is there enough administrators to do the work that needs to be done? And um, what, what has been successful with the model you have set up? Um, currently uh, with the level of administrators? I wonder um, at your, at the high school level, is it, is it enough to have the uh, level of assistant principal? You want, I think you have one assistant principal there? You know, is that enough for the staff, uh, for the amount of kids that you have? I, I would question those pieces. I did notice that there was a drop um, in uh, the capital budget fund and your, um, the amount that was in your budget for this year. And I wondered why that had dropped. Um, and then I, I think predominantly, you, you're budgeting around staff. And that's where your money should be because we're in uh, this business for teaching and learning and we need teachers. I do wonder if you have enough um, central office staff as around special education. Because I do think that you have a lot of, uh, you have a high rate of, uh, a lot of money going out to out-of-district placements. I noticed that. I think it was almost $2 million around that. And um, I wonder if there is a potential for building in-house some uh, programs. Uh, here and that could be done just as well as some of the, um, out-of-district placements. There is a place for out-of-district placements, so I will be clear in saying that. Um, and I was never shy about saying that certain students would benefit from out-of-district placements. Um, but I do think you potentially have an opportunity for growing um, some in-house perf- uh, in-house sub-suffered programs. And then also I wonder um, if, do you have enough interventionists in place to actually do the tiered system of supports that you currently um, have started doing? And uh, what does that look like as it moves up through the grade levels in the middle school? And um, what do you have in place as far as uh, putting in a tiered system of supports around social emotional learning? And staffing uh, at the high school and middle school level as well? I know in speaking with the, the kids, which they were amazing, just so you know that. I spoke with Jasper Cam, Lillian Lilly. And they were, their questions were wonderful, uh, very insightful and they were extremely articulate. Um, they did say that the schedule, uh, they felt as though their schedule was prohibitive as far as uh, being involved in a lot of extracurriculars. And um, during the day, being involved in more um, choice classes. And they wondered what could be done um, to change that. So they had more opportunities um, to have different electives. Um, so that was an interesting thing that they did bring up. Uh, and they asked, you know, they asked a lot about the um, fine performing arts assistant director. Saying that they really felt as though that was something that was needed. Uh, and that you have, um, you're poised and ready to have uh, fine and performing arts program that could be state of the art. But they said having someone come in and help oversee that would really guide everyone down a pathway uh, that would be beneficial for the district. Um, you know, I also noticed y- your per pupil expenditure is much lower than uh, many communities. And I, and I wonder why that is the way it is. Because I do think that um, you, you have very successful students here. You have very high performing students here. But there is, there are subgroups that are not probably performing as well as they could. And so um, is there a need to look at the, that piece? Um, knowing that you are going to be trying to keep staff that you've added with COVID funds? Is it going to have to be an override? I think those are uh, budget questions that I'm sure you're already talking about. Um, and I know that you did have quite a percentage increase, um, rightfully so, with the needs that were there. Um, but I also wonder, are there different things that maybe um, could have been added uh, over time that maybe haven't been added, that we need to create a plan? Um, based upon whatever the strategic plan ends up focusing on. Um, to potentially over a five-year span or whatever it might be, add some of those positions in. I think, as I said, you have a community that's extremely high performing. And I think that is the expectation and that's how it should be. Um, but I think you actually could um, perform even higher. And have more students and children performing higher uh, than where they are right now in some of them.
As I'm sure you already know, the town of Hingham has a wealth of talent in terms of both individuals and private organizations that uh, are involved with the schools. Sorry, I lost my, I had a big printout of this before. I lost it. Uh, can you talk about how you've harnessed the talent of local organizations on to um, improve the school, the quality of the students' experience in schools?
Sure. So uh, Waymouth Educational Foundation is an organization that has been um, in Waymouth for a very long time. And they did fundraising uh, for the school department. And the teachers could apply for mini grants through them uh, to enhance different things in their classroom. Um, they actually gave me a, a large block grant for technology um, one year. Because it tied in with the, our tech plan that we had and our accelerated improvement plan. And they knew it was something that we needed support uh, with. I think that we have many community, individual community members in Waymouth that were very kind, um, giving to scholarships and things like that every year for our students. Um, I did not have, I did not have large donors that were coming. Um, you know, on a daily basis, I'd love that. Just say, I'd love, you know, let us do X, Y and Z. Uh, but I would have been open to that. Um, I think there, it's important to embrace the community's support. As long as it's in the same, it aligns with the vision and the direction that everyone's going in. I think that's really important. Uh, you can't um, get distracted by some of the um, bright and shiny things on the side sometimes, if it doesn't align with the plan that you have for the district. But I always found that, uh, you know, with some people that we worked with or may not have been a community person, but it may have been a, um, someone that was going to potentially um, offer us a grant or something like that. I think when you have conversations with those people, they may come to the table saying, I want it used for this. And maybe that's not in alignment with where you're going or what your strategic plan is. I think having that conversation saying, but this is our strategic plan. This is really where we're focusing on. Uh, frequently I would have people say, oh, that's fine. I can help with that then. And um, it was through building those relationships and having conversations though, that those types of things happened. Um, I know that, that students, Jasper asked me about Box. And I had been, I've been working with Box for a really long time. And that relationship um, was built with the founder of Box, Kathleen Tully. Um, because we were willing and uh, allowed Box to come in, do a lot of work with Waymouth and things like that. And uh, that helped build that relationship. And it also served us well in, in applying for different grants and bringing funds in that way too. Um, I'm sure you have a lot of people that would like to help with certain um, targeted areas that might have a, a, a near and dear meaning to their own individual needs. Um, but if it doesn't align with the bigger picture and the long-term plan. I think that i- it, those are conversations that might be hard. But you have to have conversations with them about, this is the direction we're going with. Can you help us move forward that way? Also, sometimes people bring to the table different things that we may have blind spots about. And I think you need to listen and, and think that uh, about, is that something that maybe we need a little bit of help with? I was never afraid to have community conversations, have people come in and help us. Um, that, I think that was, it was great. It was, it was great for the kids to see and our staff to see that the community supported us. And they were there to help.
You spoke primarily about that sort of financial and fiscal help from the community. I was wondering if we could expand that. I know examples in Hingham, we have the Hingham Unity Council who is involved with the equity work that we're doing. We have CPAC who's involved with a lot of the special ed work that we're doing. Uh, so maybe expand it beyond uh, just fiscal and financial help.
Absolutely. Um, doors were always open for that help, to be honest with you. Because uh, we, we, pre-COVID, we had a lot of volunteers in and out. Um, a lot of times, um, we would have evening events or different ways for families to share their expertise, expertise. And um, and, and honestly, work with our teachers. Um, CPAC was, is fabulous. Uh, they're a wonderful group that are very dedicated um, to their children. But also in helping our special education teachers and, and supporting them. Um, I think that they bring to the table a lens that's important to listen to and hear. And um, having them come in, we did a lot of visioning around the new school building. And we invited those different stakeholders in so they could share their thoughts and ideas at the table. Um, the, the Hingham um, Huck Unity Council, sorry, okay. Yeah, I've been, I was watching a lot of the videos that are on there. And I think that the work that has been done by that organization is outstanding. And I think that um, if that's not a relationship that already has been built or bridged, I think that would be amazing to do. Um, I, I watched one of the, it was a very, it was a short little snippet, but it had um, I think it was Lisa, Lisa Shetty maybe, but it was Lisa Shetty and, and that's, you were on there. And then was a gentleman that no longer lives in Hingham, but he came back to share about his experience being in Hingham. I think that's good for kids to hear and I think it's good for those conversations to happen. Um, I, I was very impressed that uh, Ms. Shetty talked about how they've had some really good experiences in Hingham. And they've had some not so great experiences in Hingham and how there was room for growth. Um, and I think having those people say, there's room for growth. And listening to what they think would be helpful to make that growth happen is important. So I'm always open to hearing um, from different groups, having them support us. We frequently would do different evening events or weekend events. And sometimes they'd have different tables set up, you know, sharing resources and things like that. And I would frequently meet with a lot of the different community stakeholders, too. Tim, does that, does that answer a little bit more? Okay, sure. Because please know, I know there's a lot more than just financial help. So, yeah. Because frequently, it was more the other help than the financial help that we would get. So that's wonderful.
So you actually touched on this a little bit throughout, but I'm just gonna read this whole question anyway. So recently, several new music classes have been added to our program of studies to be implemented next year. As you've heard of that. As Hingham is a community that often prides itself on its arts programs, both fine and applied. But despite the impressive slate of classes that the school offers, only a single semester is actually required for graduation, which is by far the lowest in our area. So I was wondering what your views on the arts in schools are and your sort of opinion on that being the requirement?
Yeah, full disclosure, just closure, Elijah, I have a bias towards the arts and that has to sometimes be kept in check. My background for extracurriculars myself. And as an adult, I have a passion for musical theater. And I sing, not around my children, because they told me I can't. And that was actually, music was a huge piece of my classroom when I was teaching. I think music helps kids learn things sometimes. And it's a different way of expressing yourself. So I think the fine and performing arts and applied arts are very important to the curriculum and they should be there. And they should be given, I would say to my staff that worked in those fields, you are just as valued as any core academic area. And for some students, they were the only reason they came to school every day. And that's where they excelled. And we wanted to make sure there was a robust option of courses. We also wanted to make sure that it started at a young age. During my tenure as superintendent, I was able to add music teachers and art teachers at the primary level because we extended their block from 30 minutes to 40 minutes, which allowed us to keep staff on, add staff, and then have them go down to the preschool where they did not have specialists, but they went down and would work with them. Because it is, it is, it's not a nice to have, it is a must have in our curriculum. Did I answer your question there, Elijah? There's another piece to it.
Well, so the other part was the, the actual graduation requirement is only a single semester.
Yeah. So I think that's a conversation to have with your, the principal. And then also looking at the program of studies. And also talking to school committee when they're approving the program of studies. And is there room to add more credits? I heard from some of your fellow classmates that the schedule is tight. And then why is it tight? I think we need to look at what is being required, what is required for graduation? And what is maybe a requirement just because in Hingham? And is there room to change that? Is there a possibility of tweaking that? So there are opportunities for students to maybe participate in more of the electives that they might want to participate in. Is there a block that is like a possible block where different things could be taken during that timeframe? Looking at the schedule, looking at what the requirements are, the program of studies. And I think having a conversation with students about what they really would like to see happen and listening to students would be something to, a starting point to figure out how to move forward, to have them, everyone be able to participate more.
That is the end of our questions. But we, so we have a little bit of time to get to the community questions, which is great. Let's see, the first one is from a student, was sent today. So how will you contribute to the efforts of Hingham Public Schools to enhance the diversity, safety, equity and respect in our community? In your previous positions, how did you make these efforts and were they impactful?
Yeah, and I think we touched on that a little bit in one of the other questions. So different, bringing in different programs. Also, I had started doing community, school-wide community book reads. And then COVID came. So we were doing Growing Up White, How to Be Anti-Racist, the New Jim Pro. And there was, there was one other book, too. And those were different choices that staff were going to be able to choose from. We had different people that were set up to do book clubs throughout the year to go through that and have conversations around those. And then everything got turned upside down. I also think that I would leverage the community group that is doing some phenomenal work and see how they could help. And also, I think talking to the students. And students, many of the students that may have come from more of a diverse background. And I want to hear, how do they feel as though they're accepted or do they belong? Do they feel like, where is that piece where there's a disconnect? Where they're feeling as though they may not be fitting in? And why? And what do we need to do to change that? And also talking to the adults. I also, I wondered how, how, I did see, I've watched a lot of school committee meetings. And Michelle, I believe you, you have coffees with the Metco, coffee meetings with Metco families. Yeah, and I also, I just wondered how involved the Metco families are beyond that timeframe? And if they're not as involved, how do we, how do we build that relationship? Maybe not in traditional ways, but how do we get, have access for them to be able to interact more? And I think listening to students and hearing what they have to say.
The next one comes from our CPAC. Recent data has shown that a low percentage of special education students are in higher level classes at the high school. What would you do as superintendent to ensure that higher level classes are more accessible to special education students?
So I think we need to dig a little bit deeper into what's happening with the information and the data that's there. And look at some of the higher level classes and what has been put in place as far as strategies for scaffolding the learning? What might the staff feel as though they need to make sure that the learning is accessible for all students? Is it a matter of having, you know, additional hands in the classroom? Is it a matter of having different tools? There are so many technology tools available now to make things more accessible. Is it a matter of bringing in some of those pieces? Is it around maybe not ever having, never having the training that's needed? To have, to be able to differentiate the curriculum? And maybe that is something that's needed. So I think it's a lot of conversations around how to make that happen. And start it, see what's successful, what's not successful, and then tweak it as you go along.
This one is from another parent. Other schools, other schools in Massachusetts have made sustainability a strategic priority by integrating climate change action and mitigation into the curricula of all subjects. How will you make sure that our children are adequately equipped to understand and take action in the face of climate change?
I think that that is part of global awareness that has to be just part of our everyday interactions in the classroom with kids. So they're learning how to be citizens that are going to be able to create a sustainable community and environment. I knew that when we were at, I believe, the foster school, Liza shared with me the potential of looking at solar power and things like that. I think that projects like that and having the kids be involved in that help them understand what that does for us long-term in the environment. And also, when you do the new build, having, you know, your lead certification and earning extra points around green initiatives and having the students be aware of that is very important. And that is something that we try to tie in with the build ourselves. And I think listening to kids, because they have some great ideas. I knew that there were raised garden beds, I saw, in a lot of schools. There's a lot of different things that are happening. Recycling, I know that the high school, they were very proud that they are a green school. And so I think just building on some of the things you already have started and looking at long-term ways to be more efficient because things change. And as technology adapts, I think there are different things that could be incorporated. And we are also in an area where there are a lot of resources and businesses and companies that are around here that we could actually interface with and learn from. I know in Waymouth, I did a lot with, not necessarily in the environmental end, but we did a lot on the robotics pieces because there were so many robotics companies just locally. So I think leveraging some places that do work in green initiatives and environmental sustainability would be helpful as well.
See, the next one. Could you please describe an emergency incident you experienced while at school and how you handled it?
Sure. It was my birthday and there was a double bomb threat. So that was, that was a fun day. It was when all the robo calls were happening. And one of the schools had a robo hall for a bomb threat. And the fire department came out, police came out. It was decided based upon the protocols that we follow as far as incident command and all of the, we have something called REMS training that we were doing. And everyone was out. And we were moving to our secondary location. As we're moving down the road to go to a secondary location, I, on my walkie-talkie, my radio, I was notified that the school we were going to actually had a bomb threat. And we had to then quickly switch gears and get that school walking to another location. And then we turned to the school I was at, helping with at that point, to go to a different site. It was very scary for the kids. They left the building without any of their belongings. This was in the very beginning when all those robo bomb threats were happening. And the decision was to evacuate. I know protocols are a little different now. But we learned a lot from that. Because, you know, as we moved to two different sites, we took the Chapman Middle School and moved it to the Pingree Primary School, which is much, much smaller. And we took the Abigail Adams Middle School and moved it down to the Academy Primary School. Again, much, much smaller, but they had a little bit more swing space. Doing reunification with families, we learned a lot that day. And we made sure we had laptops set up. Internet connection was an issue we found. So we figured out where we needed to have extra aero hubs for connectivity. Families were coming or sending other people that weren't on the emergency release list. We wouldn't release the kids because protocol-wise, we would never release a child to someone that wasn't on that list. People were angry. It was, it was quite a learning experience. We always, anytime we have a situation like that, I always do a debrief with my team. And we sat down and we had the police and fire and everyone there. And we walked through what went well, what would we do differently? And hopefully, we would never have to deal with it again. But we knew if we did have to deal with it again, we were more confident and we were going to be more skilled and successful at it.
Thank you. Well, that's the end of our questions for today. Thank you. It's been, you know, it's been a long day. Is there anything else you want us to know?
Yeah, I think I really would like to articulate, I truly mean this when I tell you I enjoyed today. Was it a long day? Yeah, it was a long day. But it was, it was a great day. And I think that I could see the pride that is in your schools. This, between the students, the staff, the administrators. Everyone was so welcoming and kind and, you know, open doors. And when I was in and out of the, some of the classrooms, it was wonderful to see the interactions between your staff and the kids and just the pure joy of learning that was happening. The kids sitting in the hallways, doing things out in the hallways, different activities. A lot of snack time spread out in the hallway. Going, going to your, your middle school and your high school. I really enjoyed even just chatting with some of the kids in the hallways when we were moving around. I met one of the Lilies that I got to answer some questions with, I met her in the hallway. You know, when I was at the high school. And I also met, I think it was the senior class president. And, you know, we got to talk a little bit about, you know, how excited he is. He's going to find out about college acceptance tomorrow at some point. And it was nice to see how articulate your students were and how they did not shy away from speaking with other adults that were there. And I think that's something I want to compliment you on. It was just really, it was pervasive through your entire district. I think that a lot of the work that you are doing right now, that is right within my wheelhouse and my skill set. And I've done that in my prior district. And I would love to bring my knowledge here and also learn from you, but also be able to share some of the experiences I've had in how to create a little bit more of a diversified educational program that makes it so it's accessible for everyone, yet still extremely challenging and provides a high level of academic learning. I've watched a lot, I've watched a lot of school community meetings and different things, community meetings that are happening in Hingham. Because I wanted to make sure I could see myself and get a little bit of a feel of the pulse of what's going on. I know that there is work to be done around diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging that is, has been shared very loud and clear. I also know there's a lot of work to be done with special education. And that is my background and something that I actually enjoy working on and I'm passionate about. I firmly believe that all kids should have a high-quality education that is rigorous, meets their individual needs and also is something that a community can be proud of. You have wonderful scores, you absolutely do. But I also think that it could be even better. And I would love to be given the opportunity to help you grow and move down that pathway that you have ahead of you with your new, you know, strategic plan and the new building and things like that. It's just an exciting time, I think, in your community. And I really would love to be part of that. As I said before, I have not applied anywhere else. I specifically chose to apply here. I shared with you that you're more than welcome to call anyone in district where I have come from. I left on really good terms. I shared with you why I left. And I miss public education. So I want to be back in the game. I want to be back working with kids and students and parents and guardians in the community at large. And I, I do think I would be a good fit for your community and I hope, and I hope you would consider me. So truly thank you for today. It was wonderful. I actually even got like a, I think it was like a pity hug. There was a little child who came and hugged Mary Eastwood. And then all of a sudden, I think he kind of like just ran into me and he went, oh. You know, I miss that. I miss being out with kids in the classrooms and things like that. So it really was, it really was a lovely day and thank you for that.
Thank you.
One last question. What is the timeframe for next steps?
So we are meeting next Tuesday to discuss it. So it should move pretty quickly.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.